Did you get the coins?
No, I didn't make it Saturday.
Okay, Sheriff. Sheriff. It is Tuesday, June 9th, 2020 with all means of order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On and on board.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed?
May 2020 Sheriff's Files File.
Sheriff, would you please, you know, we can just do away with Sheriff's Department. They're talking about doing away with Police Department.
Be nice.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a meeting with Verdant Company to look at the clock, maybe do some maintenance on it and stuff. That's tomorrow, right Greg?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to be there for that. I've got a few other little meeting stuff. Are we doing radio on Friday on regular schedule?
Oh, I don't know. I hadn't even, I hadn't even thought, yeah.
You were on there a week or two.
Yeah, let me check. Yeah, let me check the job.
Got it. That's all I got. Keep the thing rolling.
A sleep meeting tomorrow at 11:30 at the Chamber.
I think, do we have a, Sheriff, sir, do we have a policy group call today?
We do.
You know, I'm gonna have to separate you two. I can tell.
You know what? You're right. I will tell his damn best. He was trying to talk me into it and I said no, but now I am.
We have a policy group call day at 1:30.
Yes.
And then on Sunday for Flag Day, the Old Car Club is going to do a patriotic cruise around the retirement homes. And then I will check on KWS. And that's all I've got. Presentation from staff consultants and invited guests, city-county cooperative project status update.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, yeah, we've often talked about coming up and talking about projects when there really wasn't necessarily any big topic, but, so here we are. So there's really the four projects that we have, sort of in various and secondary phases, that were part of the city-county cooperative projects. And so the first one of those is, of course, our Dunklin Street Bridge Project. We had hoped that that project would be complete by the end of next week, but unfortunately it is not going to be. Various things, reasons for that. But we're looking now perhaps as the second week of July is a potential date for that to be finished. We've had some issues with, you know, some of the decorative panels that are going to go on the barrier curbs of the bridge, ultimately didn't have, we were shy about one panel and I'm not for sure if it's coming on a slow boat from somewhere else. But trying to get that last panel and to enable us to pour those abutment, or those barrier curbs is problematic for us. But the curb is going in and so we're basically about halfway down through the block. And so pretty soon we'll have all that curb and guttering in, but really we're probably still looking at the middle of July before that thing's done.
How are we on budget?
Um, not too bad. There have been a few things that have run over a little bit. Some of it's related to the sewer, of course, our sewer division's, you know, going to cover those costs. You know, as you get towards the end, you know, folks are, you know, pointing out that, hey, there's a crack in my driveway there that, you know, I'm sure wasn't there when you started the project. So those sorts of things. And so, you know, ultimately there's some bits of overrun and some concrete costs and, but otherwise we're doing pretty well in terms of budget. I think ultimately, we did spend some money, additional money, as winter came on to lay new asphalt through the intersection of Mulberry. And so that was probably a $20,000 bill to get that asphalt, basically to get that road open back up through the winter. So that's probably the biggest overrun that we've got on that project. As far as the East High Street project goes, that project is pretty much on schedule. And so a lot of underground work has taken place so far, new stormwater, new sanitary sewer lines. And then as we started that project, the water company also decided that yes, their water main probably should be replaced as well. So we'd been kind of pushing on them for a while to look into that. And they just kind of made the decision right as we started the project that that's what they were going to do. So that required some additional coordination to start with in trying to get those guys, you know, out of the way as we were trying to dig for the sewers. So, but that's underway. Those guys are almost finished now. We started building steps and retaining walls on the western end of the project. And so hope to have all that finished up through the school driveway by the 4th of July. And then hope to come back and get sidewalks and curbs and stuff in up to the school driveway before school starts. Of course, school starting seems to be a moving date, so we'll have to kind of be cognizant of that as we go forward. So ultimately, that project is, you know, is on schedule. Again, you know, there hasn't been anything, as far as budget-wise goes, it looks like it's, you know, gonna lead to any big changes. We did add some additional sewer work to the project, but again, that's being paid for by our sewer department with the city. The other project or other projects that we have going, ultimately, we have the Clark Avenue project with the roundabouts there. Of course, we had the cost share funds from the state involved in that project. And as nearly as we can tell, those funds still exist. And so we're continuing with the design of that project. Bartland West is doing that for us. Probably one of the big decision points that we're working through right now is at the intersection of Clark and Dunklin and trying to sort out exactly where that roundabout should sit in terms of where the center of that roundabout is. What's causing difficulty is, you know, Dunklin Street to the west drops off very quickly. And so trying to figure out the grades and trying to get that, what is it, 30, 135-foot circle in a relatively flat spot while you're falling off the side of the hill is a little, is causing some challenges. And so there will most likely be some additional right-of-way impacts, which we had anticipated, but, you know, probably didn't understand completely as we move forward with that project. But they're still working with the, you know, the roundabouts at the highway interchange. And so we haven't really focused on those, but they're kind of beginning to work in the background. Probably won't be a lot of impacts there in terms of right-of-way. Looks like those are gonna fit in there pretty well. Probably the property where the Pizza Quick is, is probably the one that, or was, is gonna be the one that's probably impacted the most there. And then the other project that we're working on, of course, is MSP. We're not, of course, you know, if you follow things in the council, the council passed a resolution this past Monday to select the Chesterfield Group developer for that site. And so there'll be work that continues with those folks, I think, for the rest of the year. And ultimately, there would be an agreement signed with the city, hopefully by December of this year, I think is what the schedule is for that. Meanwhile, we have applied for an EDA grant to help with infrastructure construction along with that plan. And so we had submitted that grant and heard back from those folks, basically asking us to reduce the scope because they didn't want to give us the full amount that we were asking for. So actually, just yesterday, we resubmitted a grant application that was reduced in scope from what we'd originally asked. And so ultimately, I think August or September is the timeframe that those things, those grants would perhaps be announced. But if we were to get it, basically, it would help us fund, you know, take the 1.6 million that we have, the million from the county and the 600,000 from the city, would basically double that amount to build Chestnut Street and then the street that would be in front of what's the hotel and conference center. And so that's kind of where that sits. So we're hopeful, I mean, it certainly seems like the, hopefully with all the gyrations that we've gone through in this grant application and having been requested to, you know, to refine that further, certainly seems like that's, you know, that we might, you know, be able to get those funds. So anyway, that's kind of where all those things stand and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So when's the timeline then on Clark Avenue? When are you gonna start that?
So what we had listed in the agreement with the cost share funds is that we would start construction on that in the April timeframe next year. So the way the agreement actually is worded, because ultimately, we are, you know, we are, we need the cost share funds in order to build the roundabouts at the highway interchange. And so the plan is that we would potentially start that project, start at Clark and Dunklin and work on that roundabout, because ultimately, that's a roundabout that the city and county is, is involved in and had agreed to even before the cost share came up. And then not stop the cost share until we're guaranteed that the state legislator has re-appropriated the funds that could pay for the roundabouts at Clark, or at the ramp terminals. And so right now, we're sort of working on the idea that we would perhaps build the Clark and Dunklin roundabout first, get it open, and then move into building the roundabouts at the highway. So that would all happen, begin next year, and then depending would perhaps finish in the following year.
I don't have any questions then. You addressed a lot of it, David. Thank you.
I think, you know, really, maybe come back in October, like every three months or so, it's nice to know where we stand.
Sure. Yeah, hopefully by that time, we'll have one less project to talk about.
Yeah.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David. Run like hell.
I know, it's, I can get between the raindrops.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah. Christie, why don't we go ahead and, since we've got so many here, you wanna talk on the COVID testing discussion?
You can.
I'll just move you up.
I just want to remind everybody, if you're gonna talk, we need to come up around the microphones to help further recording, so.
We don't have an agreement today, but we have been working on the costs, how much it would be to stand up an integrated testing site at the old building.
Thank you.
So these are just, these are draft costs, but we can talk about it. Mike, do you wanna come up too?
Mike, do you wanna go?
So at this time, we received some costs from Cap Region as to, you know, how much they've been going through, it's kind of on the second page there, just supplies and a sheet of like what we could provide and what we would need to buy and what Cap Region would need now. We've still been talking to St. Mary's about it. Greg's staff went over and built buildings from the bushes. My partner said it was wonderful. So I really appreciate his staff taking the time to do that and get it, get it up and running. You know, as we talked about, only staff would be inside the building. They wouldn't bring patients and they would use the registration process that they have now and the patients would just go there to be tested. I think our issue right now is maybe some registration staff from St. Mary's and working out some of those kinks. Even though we don't have an agreement today, we would like to keep proceeding and maybe get that agreement signed. I know Cap Region would still like to start testing there on Monday. We're not sure if St. Mary's would be ready to do that. And then as we've talked about, we know that at some point, the Governor's Office in the HSS will ask us to do testing for anybody that wants it. I did receive that letter from Dr. Williams last night, basically to that effect. I don't think as a, as a system, as a public health system, we're ready to jump into those waters yet. I think that getting this testing site up and running and getting our kinks worked out and figuring out how that registration process would work, how we would get people pre-registered, how we would kind of get the flow of things down, a lot of those questions still need to be answered. But getting the testing site up and running would help us kind of get that process lined out to help with the others. So the tent is not on this list because Chris had been working with Sierra to see if there was one in the region that we could use for free. So we were trying to not buy one. The other cost that's not on there is the copier, printer, fax scanner. Cap Region was just gonna bring their printers and everything that they have, right, their label printers. So we weren't, we were not gonna purchase that piece of equipment. Thank you to Brian too, who worked on getting the internet and phone and backline cost in. And then if we, at some point, if we do go to the community, why test him or test anybody who wants it without a doctor's note? Cap Region did say their costs, which it's gonna depend what lab we use, but right now the cost for a test kit and analysis is about $100 each.
That's just, is that personnel cost included?
No, that's just the test kit and the analysis. So the, the contract listing there, that is the staff cost. So that's $20 an hour for six staff. June is 165 hours and then the rest of the months are 330 hours for the month. That's where I got that number from. And then the supplies that were on that second page, I just took them and doubled them. I kind of estimated what you guys had sent me and padded, you know, because you only had like two and a half months worth. So there was nine of something, I think like 15 or 20. And then I doubled it because we just had numbers from one system to try to get an estimate of the supply cost. Like I said, the tent cost is not on there because we were trying to figure out how we could do it without spending.
Where did you say you got the contract costs?
$20 an hour for staff, times six staff. And then July, or June, oh, that's supposed to be, I'm missing a month in there. Sorry about that. So, yeah, you need to add another month to that, my spreadsheet. It's either hidden and it's in the cost or it's not. Because June is just half a month and the rest of the months would be 330 hours for the month. So that's how it's.
I think it's per week. 330 hours, staff hours per week.
Okay, so mine never go wrong. I thought it was 330 a month.
Because six people, 55 hours for six people is 330.
So what, what kind of hours operation are you working off of?
We had just what we had talked about in the, when we had pulled together, it was seven days a week and we were looking at shortened hours on the weekend. I think it was 10 to 2. And we had talked about, I think it was eight to three or? Eight to four on Monday through Friday, but that is all up for discussion.
So we really don't have anything together as far as the contracts.
We don't.
For that, but we can still.
We would like to move forward.
Move forward with trying to get the building stood up. I mean, that location and everything as of now is still good to go.
Yes.
So. I mean, it makes sense to keep moving if we're gonna have to do this and we can deal with the contract later on.
And I can revise these numbers and send them back.
And if we need to work and, you know, and look at those hours of operation, I think we can work and see what's best for the community and if that needs to be shortened to, you know, reduce hours and, or staff hours and those types of things.
It'll likely be variable based on the demand. As we move into fall, it's probably gonna change significantly from what it is right now.
I just think we need to have the agreement in place before we expend any funds.
With hospitals or?
With, with all of our community partners, so.
But if we stand it up and we decide we're gonna have to do community-wide testing, they don't even necessarily have to be involved with it at that point. I mean, we still would want to use some of your resources and stuff. But at that point, it's pretty much all gonna be on us, right?
If we have to stand up a community testing site, we're going to need our community partners because of the collaborative practice agreements they have with the physicians and because the agreements that they have with the lab. We don't, we don't have a medical director on site. We have a contractor who one that reviews our charts, but we will need our community partners to help in some, in some way. But we do not have the staff.
But not in.
On a testing site.
Not in the capacity that we're looking at right now, because right now, we're looking at them staffing a lot of it and doing it.
Then we would have to hire and train staff.
I think that's where it's going.
Yeah, we'll need more nurses.
Anyway. Much to hate for admitted, I think that's.
We don't have those resources at this point.
We would all have to hire, we would have to hire more staff for that, to do all the callbacks, to do all the registration, to do the testing. It would end up going to create a process. Yeah, to create a process. The easiest part is taking this test, the swap-up somebody's notes.
The easiest part? They haven't tried to do that to me, obviously.
So when you open it up to the public, it's gonna be crazy for a little while.
I don't know, I don't know how many.
I, I think you're almost gonna have to have everything pre-registered and, because we only have so much staff to deal with this. So if you open it up to public, that doesn't mean that 75 people can come in in an hour and do this stuff, because it really doesn't do any good. We can't even trace it. We don't have staffing to do this. This is putting us in a terrible spot right now.
There's a number of different ways that different communities have managed this, everything from having certain ages come at different times so that you're not mixing the elderly with younger people. And they also do it by alphabet. You come on this day or this time, if your last name starts with, there's lots of different ways to do that. We'd have to work out that process.
Yeah, I think it's by appointment only. So I don't think it's just show up.
Well, we'd probably be overwhelmed at that. I don't think we can probably, that would be great, but, at least at the beginning.
And that may change if it's the fall versus the summer and what that looks like.
And we don't know. We don't know if there's this.
So if you just, just take everybody that comes, you know, somebody could come every day.
They could.
So, I mean, and the test is a snapshot in time. So you could, you could not have it today and have it tomorrow. So, I mean.
Totally get it. We completely understand.
I mean, I really don't think a lot of people are gonna get tested, so.
I mean.
What, what my telephone call on Saturday mornings has told me is that everybody wants to be tested, except those that don't want to know whether or not, because they may have to stay home from work. I don't know this community whether or not they would. There are those that believe that. We have had a significant amount in the community that we're totally unaware of. They just have been asymptomatic or very, very few symptoms. So I'm hoping you're right, that not many want to be tested.
Two is not, we've got calls about people whose employers are wanting to be tested.
Sorry. Crack the whip.
What we've been coming up against too is employers wanting them to be tested just because, and which we've tried to explain to them, but also schools, they're wanting them to be tested. I had somebody call me yesterday that needed to be tested and it had to be done by Fri-, by the 14th, which I think is, I don't know, whenever that is, Sunday. And I had no place to send them because there's nobody that's gonna do it without an order and to get an order now, you have to have symptoms. So at some point, when we're gonna, how are we gonna get those people tested? I know you all do your pre-ops, but I told them to ask the school what the school has planned for those students, because the school needs to have something that they can do for those students.
We have nursing homes that are requiring before they leave the hospital, they be tested.
But at least they're in the hospital and you all could test them, right?
We can get an order.
Right. But for these students that are just trying to go in to do, the schools are wanting them to do it.
They probably need to get it when they do their school physical.
Yeah. But, so anyway, I think that we're gonna have some of that too.
With those, if we do the oath, we have to have something with them.
Well, I think we just need to keep moving with standing up the facility. I don't necessarily see it as putting a cart before the horse. I think we're loading the cart up and getting it ready for the horse. So I don't know if you think we have to have agreements, we can. I don't know how soon that agreement's gonna come to fruition either, so. And we're gonna have to hire some outside people or additional people, that's inevitable. So we gotta start that and try to get things going beforehand.
If we, yeah, if we want to open it up.
So you think next week you'll be open or?
That was the goal.
I mean, if it doesn't happen next week, we at least keep moving instead of saying we're just gonna stop everything until we get a decision made.
But I think that the, I mean, the holdup is the tent and the agreement, other than that.
So what is, what is the feeling of the commitment of the different community partners coming together? For the combined side. The likelihood to do the combined side. Mass testing aside. Correct, mass testing aside.
Well, as Christie was alluding to, St. Mary's, you know, we've also, at the same time that this is going on, we're opening back up for elective services and, you know, it's stretching especially our registration team, too thin. So, and from the St. Mary's perspective and Cap Region too, we're really talking about taking in the service that we're already offering at our individual locations and relocating is essentially what we're doing, because the amount of resources that we're going to need to do that are essentially the same. You know, some of the clinical side, I guess, will, you know, reduce some of that, but because of the requirement to have the patients registered within your own service to be able to get the order done, whatever, the registration piece is probably the, you can't reduce that from either side and at least on the St. Mary's side, that's our biggest limiting factor. And of course, then you get into, I don't want to commit to this if I can't, you know, maintain this long-term either, so it's, it's a challenge for us.
So you're doing Audrain testing this week, right? Is that, do you have to have a doctor's note for those people from Audrain?
So Audrain is a little bit different for us, Jefferson City-wise, you know, you have to have an order. Audrain, their county has already set up a community-wide site that they do not require a physician order for, similar to what we would probably end up having to do if it was opened up to, you know, the entire community, like Christie was referring to. So that's the model that they've gone toward already. So under that model, it's put all the resources back onto that testing site, just like we were talking about, where really registration's not required at that point. It's more on the clinical side and the operational pieces behind the scenes at that point.
So what do they do if they have a physician order and they need to route a result back to a provider?
I've not asked that question. It's a good one.
Fascinating.
I'll ask, yeah.
Well, when all of those tests that are done, it's, will have to be sent to someone because it has to be followed. So we're gonna have to, I mean, I can't imagine totally getting rid of registration because we're gonna have to have some information. I think the other thing, at least for us, is that, Cap Region, is that it's important for us to be a partner with Cole County and with St. Mary's and JCMG and other health partners in the community. This is a service we feel like the community wants now and will probably need as we move into November, December, January, especially with the flu season, in not knowing what's the flu and what's COVID. And I guess we need a head nod from our commissioner saying, keep moving forward with this so that we can get people hired, because once you make that decision that it's okay to keep moving and we're gonna do this, then we still have to hire and train people for those sites. And if we wait another week or two to do that, then we're talking the 1st of July into June. And it's, it's hot, it's, it's hot out there now. And I think as a community, Cole County certainly can't handle this by themselves. None of us can. So as a healthcare community, we need to do this. And we need the nod from you guys to keep moving forward to get this done.
I'm fine with moving forward with it and keeping going on the building and working on the agreements. I think Chris kinda was a holdup on it, and I'm not sure Sam can say a whole lot about it.
I, I, well, I was talking to Jill for, for doing the whole community. I can, and I, I agree with you, we need to just keep moving forward. So.
So we're looking at it as two different things. You got standing up the operations and then you actually have the other cooperations and administration and, and stuff. And, I mean, I,
Yeah.
I can argue with it. I don't mind arguing, but I've, I'm ready to move forward with standing it up and leaving the agreements as a whole different issue. So.
I think it's one and the same, so. I mean, if, if Sam can vote on that, I, I doubt that he can vote on that, but I just wanna see.
So we're just giving them authority to keep moving ahead.
Can we work on the agreements and can we work out the, the piece with the registration stuff where we're ready to proceed and have a meeting later in the week to sign our agreement?
Yeah, I mean, I can meet later in the week. Obviously, you know, we just need to make sure that, that all our partners are on board. I mean, Cap Region, Community Health Center, JCMG.
The Community Health Center will utilize it for testing, but they can't send staff over there to work because of the way their insurance works with the federal government. They are insured by site. So even like their mobile unit is insured at the site. So for Dr. Sullivan to be able to send staff over there, she has to have her to approve an insurance change. So they will use it for testing, but to have her staff work there, to get the federal government to approve that insurance change, it would take too long. And she doesn't have the nurses to send either, but they will utilize it for testing because they're utilizing your systems now for testing.
So as far as us moving with the building, that's all us. That's all Cole County has, nothing to do with the partners, so. I can argue both sides of it, but I think that we can keep that separate than with the partners. And so when, when there is involvement, Sam does, I think, needs to stay as far away as possible with the other agreements.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna understand how that, I mean, so if we're standing up a testing site, we're gonna pay all the people, we're gonna bill everybody for the tests we provide.
No, no, no. They will pay the billing for the tests, we won't do that.
That's why we're registering with our handlers.
Yeah, that's why they have registration.
So then that's, so then if, if you all are involved, then it's not Cole County standing up a testing site and billing all the partners for services that we provide. It's, you're gonna be a partner and bill your own patients. That's a different scenario.
I, I agree. I think the way that it's, my understanding is, our involvement is we're still basically maintaining a different site than what we're currently doing, like I said before, but the only difference for us, other than that, is that we would be reimbursed for the staffing hours, which is part of what's.
And the PPE.
Correct.
And the testing.
No.
Well, we didn't talk about that, not, not the testing until it opens up to community-wide. Right now, you would still do the billing because that, by day, would still need to be registered under your systems.
But once it opens up, that's gone.
Dr. Williams recommended that we use our CARES money to pay for the testing at that point.
I just, I see it differently. I mean, if, if Cole County's setting up a testing site and we're gonna test people, we're gonna do our own registration, we're gonna test people, we're gonna get the results, and then we're gonna send it to our healthcare partners. That's a different scenario than having, than having partners doing registration.
Right, and that's what we were talking about. That would be a little bit later, once we got that system set up. For right now, the first step is just setting it up at this other site for them to continue doing it as they're doing it. And then when we wanna open it up for testing for anyone, we would have to have our own registration system. We would have to find partners to help with the testing because we don't have the staff. And that's a whole, a whole nother problem. And we need to move towards that, but we're not there today.
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
I think you're talking like a phase one, phase two kind of, just in the middle of what we got down along with COVID. It's this, you're doing that, it's up, you're.
Changes all the time.
You need to be planning and ready for phase two right now.
But phase one is just getting it set up and doing it as they're doing it at their other sites, but having it at the old health department. And then phase two will be letting, opening up to the community.
I'm not involved in this, but can I ask a question? Are you talking about the open testing the state is saying to do? Because all the articles I've read in the paper about it is that people are registering with Department of Health for the testing and they're, and they're providing National Guard members to do the testing.
So they're, they're identifying areas of the state to go in and do that, and we have not been picked as an area to come in and do that. And it's only for two days. We're talking about standing it up ourselves and having it.
Ongoing.
Right.
They chose Columbia instead of us.
Right, and then now they're gonna do off, off stage in Monata because they don't have any place in those counties to get tested.
So it's just hard for me to understand because we've had increased testing, we've had pre-op testing. I mean, the testing is going up and up and up. And yet, we've had one in the last fourteen days.
We have one at Kmart.
Yeah.
Yeah, they tested all the inmates and employees at Algoa, and so far, we have not had any positives from that mass testing in Cole County. I don't know if other counties had employees, but so far, we have not got any.
And so the state, the state is open to, we had huge events at Lake Theos Arcs with very little, if any, positive tests. We've had ball tournaments, sporting events opening up, people are gathering. So I, I mean, I don't know where the spread is, but it's obviously not here local. Yeah. But, I mean, so, you know, people are doing their part.
Right.
So.
Well, I'm still fine with the physical building and standing up and to continue moving on that. And the rest of the stuff that we have to do to get, working together on it, we can address separately. But I think when you, if we're gonna be doing this, it's no sense holding it up for a week. And then we get the agreement in place and we're, now we're still a week behind and it's not gonna get any cooler out there. Temperature's not gonna get any better, so. And part of doing the integrated site was to, you know, save on the PPE and keep stuff all in one place. So, if we're gonna do it, we might as well keep moving, so.
I agree with Jeff more and more lately, you're scaring me.
You must be drinking a lot.
So can you give us a couple days to, I'm, I'm gonna correct its spreadsheet, sorry about that. And we'll continue to work on it and work with Jill and come back Thursday or Friday with an agreement?
If you wanna put something on the agenda for Thursday or Friday, that time that works for y'all, then let's just schedule it. And if it works, it works, and if it doesn't, I mean, it'd be easier for us to schedule now around other stuff.
Yeah, I'm out Friday.
So Thursday afternoon, if we wanna try to schedule something, if that works, if we get it together.
Yeah, sorry, for my hair. What time Thursday afternoon do you want me?
After lunch.
That's what afternoon means, Sam.
I know, well, there's some days I don't eat lunch till two thirty or three.
I'm just teasing you.
I'm out all day Thursday, too. Sorry. I could do Friday morning, early.
Just let me know.
Seven or eight.
Seven.
My schedule's flexible, I'll work around it.
Well, I don't think Lynn would wanna come in at seven to twelve.
Eight, eight o'clock Friday morning?
Eight AM, okay, eight AM Friday.
Just having all the food on the agenda.
Okay.
Do we? And we're gonna have to talk about the agreement, so is that essentially contract negotiation and put that in closed session? Because there may be more to it than just.
I think we can talk about it open, it'll be written up by that point. Why should one be closed?
I'm just asking.
We, contracts, you can negotiate them if you're, the parties are negotiating. In a closed session.
Well, there could be some negotiating in there, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, let's do that. Because then if we do have to, if we do wanna talk about it. Because they can talk about all they want to and negotiate, they're not in open session. Right, so. All right. Fair enough.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Why are you trying to run out of here?
Okay. We'll go back. Bids and contracts, signed of twenty twenty dash SS one-one, Thermo Fisher Scientific Soul Source.
This is a soul source that we have run and tried to be approved and signed. EMS, if you have any questions about it.
Maybe that we approve and sign the soul source for Thermo Fisher Scientific.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of twenty twenty seventeen elevator modernization.
I'm gonna put this on and scrap it and re-bid it next year.
We did bid it out, there was only one bidder that bid on it, which was Otis. We had estimated it to be around eighty-five thousand, and it came in at a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
And with the new elevator laws, so we'd have to change a bunch, and there are probably another fifty thousand dollars on top of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you, if I could get you to reject all bids, then make a motion to reject all bids.
Maybe that we reject all bids.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Signing of twenty twenty dash oh-one telephone system contract.
And this is the contract agreement you guys awarded the bid to CenturyLink, and Jill has reviewed this contract. And here is the contract for signing.
So, so the, the only caveat to that is, we went through and actually reviewed the, the previous amount, and we found some licenses in there, so like there was an E nine-one-one license that is now being provided free of charge. So we reduced the price. And then there was also some network stuff in there that we were gonna work through a different vendor. So the price was reduced to,
I think it's on page three.
Two fifty-four. You have the contract, I think.
Yeah, it's, I think it's on page three.
It went from two sixty-one to two fifty-four. Two fifty-four, three eighty-two eighteen. And it was two sixty-one, two twenty-one, ninety-one. So there's about a seven thousand dollar, it's seven thousand dollars less.
Did you get the Fringer Center added to that as well?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. That's turnkey. From Cent- from CenturyLink.
You guys good with it?
Yeah.
I maybe that we sign the telephone system contract with CenturyLink.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of state homeland security grant sub-award agreements FY nineteen.
Those three award contracts are for receipt of funding from state homeland security grant. We have one of them for the MEOC, the Mobile Emergency Command Center, it's for sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I have one for Homeland Security Response Team or C-Cert for thirty-four thousand, one hundred. And then an additional one for a thousand dollars, which is the generator load test.
Are these things we usually get every year? Are these different?
The MEOC, there is agile mesh camera upgrades, which is why it's sixty-three thousand. There's about twenty-five thousand, I think, in camera upgrades, the rest of it's sustainment. And then for the HSRT or C-Cert, there's a lot of biological testing that was added to it. Outside of that, it's sustainment.
Biological testing for?
Hazmat.
Okay.
So in total, it comes to ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty, that was awarded to the county.
We sign in these agreements with the RPC?
That's correct. Typically, the executive director would sign them first and send them to us. I guess they've changed in the last couple of months, so I need the presiding commissioner to sign first, and then we'll send it back and then give it to David to sign, and then I'll send you there.
I maybe that we sign the sub-award agreements from the federal DHS, FEMA, with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we did that. Signing of twenty twenty dash fifteen vehicle equipment install and repair services contract.
This was the bid that you awarded last week, this is just the contract. And this is part of the Sheriff's Department's. Ask for approval on that agreement.
What was that for?
It's the vehicle installation of equipment.
Okay, radios, different stuff. I maybe that we sign the vehicle equipment install and repair service with Wireless USA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of EPCR contract?
I've got it. Where's President's signature?
Good morning, Jill.
Good morning.
What this is, is the EPCR, so the current EPCR provider, that agreement ends, I believe it's October tenth. And it takes about three months to make that transition go smoothly with all the program, and it needs to be done. And so this is the, excuse me, the contract to change the EPCR vendor. It's a pass-through through Digitech with our contract with them. So it goes through Digitech, that's who we actually pay as part of the RFP that we did a year and a half ago or whatever.
I maybe that we sign the ESO agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A bid award of twenty twenty dash sixteen roof replacements.
Okay, as you remember, we bid out the health department roof and the law enforcement roof. We did have four different vendors on this, that bid on this project. Do you guys have the tab that you can look at? Missouri Builders were the total lowest bid for both projects without the discount. But if you divide it out between Missouri Builders and Weathercraft, each getting help, the health department to Missouri Builders and the Weathercraft, the law enforcement center, then you will save another, over a little over five thousand dollars. So that's our recommendation, is to split those up and to give the health department, health, health department roof to Missouri Builders and law enforcement to Weathercraft.
Do I agree?
And there is timing of when those would start and finish, should be in your packet there.
Both companies could start within two weeks, two to three weeks.
So, we've got issues with the law enforcement and the insurance adjustment and stuff. Do we need to wait until that's resolved before we do this work?
Do we need to wait until that's resolved before we do this work?
That's your call.
I think we do. I think we've got a lot of issues over there, and we've still got issues with the, um, the claims on it. So. I don't wanna hold it up either. I wanna get it done as soon as possible, but. If we can start replacing it in two weeks, we're gonna take away any evidence that we have. That is gonna continue to get holes in it, and any argument that we had, so.
If we can't start within the next two or three weeks, we're looking at October, November, and that's not a good time to be putting the roof down.
I understand, but it's also a difference between getting what we are owed on that roof. Cause right now, before the tornado, we had a roof with a ten or eleven-year warranty on it. And right now, all they wanna do is replace the, repair, and it has voided the warranty, so we have no warranty for any longer on the roof. I, the roof has to be replaced. I don't have a question with that at all. But, for what they're wanting to give us is maybe a tenth. So, I think we have about twenty-eight thousand dollars in repairs. And now, we have a roof that's still gonna have more repairs needed over the next ten years and no warranty, so. I'm fine with moving ahead on the health department. I'm fine with basically awarding them the contract, but signing the contract, not ready to move forward on that yet. And I don't know how long that price will be held.
That I'd have to go back and ask. On their documentation, they were ready to start the first of July. I'm sure, you know, they have to order their supplies now, so to be able to start then. I'd have to get back with them and ask them what, you know, what the option would be. If you wanna go ahead and award the bids, I guess we can do that.
Award them?
Yep.
And work out the details. I wouldn't think, the company's gonna take much more time to decide what they're gonna do. That is the insurance company.
I'll take the over on that one.
So, what was, uh, what did insurance pay on the health department building?
Hundred and forty, if I remember right. It was right around that.
So, law enforcement went through a tornado, health department went through a hailstorm, and they replaced the health department. Basically. Paid us pennies on the law enforcement.
That twenty-eight thousand dollar figure, that included the air conditioner unit that sat on top of there. So, it was not that much that we've paid on just the roof repairs at this point.
Or we could go ahead and award it pending. Hopefully, within the next thirty days, we will have. A decision one way or another, right?
I don't think it's gonna happen.
Don't think it'll happen that quickly?
I don't think so. I think we're gonna probably have to get some. Attorney involvement, so. I mean, you need to look into Jill and see if we gotta get outside. Representation or what on this with the insurance claim.
Okay, someone needs to fill me in on the details then. As to how much it's worth and all that other stuff.
We know how much a new one costs now. We know how much a new one costs now.
My only concern is, like Greg said, if we wait and snow arrives, gets up in our sense, we're gonna have a lot more damage internal. And I know what you're saying, Jeff, but. I gotta look at my facility. That's good.
If this goes to litigation, it's gonna be.
Long time.
Over a year from now.
And we do have that infrared study that was done, so that's what they're gonna hold their feet to.
Did we get a copy of that too, or?
I can get one. I would assume.
Snapshot in time too. That, I'm not gonna tell you anything after we've had more weather. And. I don't disagree with Sheriff at all that we need to, it really needs to be fixed right now. So, that's what we, I need to know lawfully what we can do, because what we're trying to do is mitigate any further damages. So, we need to do this now. We need to pull the trigger. But I also wanna have our ducks in a row, so when I go back to the adjuster or the insurance company. We have our proof.
If you have to take it to court through litigation, that's a lengthy process.
Right. That's why I said I would take the over. That's not that it's gonna happen in thirty days. I also agree with what the sheriff says. We don't wanna wait another, another season and get into winter or even another year before we address it, cause we need to, we need to address it. A month ago, probably. They went up there and.
Six weeks, maybe.
Worth it to look at it again to see if we see any new damage. We have a crew right there that it's, it's getting worse, but I don't know if it would after a month and a half.
I don't know. I'd have to look, go back through.
Their adjuster was pretty adamant that he found everything. And said it's not anything else that's gonna happen. And they said, that's fine, then give us a, give us an eleven-year warranty on the roof with the patches.
Yeah.
Well, I can't do that. So, and I think right now, it's on, on the adjuster, and our agent is working to work with the actual insurance company. And. I don't know where it's going from there. That's kinda where it was left last week, the way I understood it. So. I'm fine with awarding it today, and we'll get on the horn with, with the agent, see where it's going. And then, Jill, in the meantime, I'd like to figure out what we need to do to where we can proceed, and like I said, mitigate any other further damage. So, we can, we can proceed.
Okay. Well, if you would just award the bid today, then I will definitely get Mid-Missouri Builders contract ready for next week, and then get confirmation from Weathercraft. If we didn't do it right away, what their options are.
Well, we've had two of the roofers up on there and said it needs to be replaced.
No, I mean, what their options are if we don't do it in July.
Do we need to do a transfer on that?
Not yet, cause we won't execute the contract yet.
When the contract's, yeah.
Just let, just let me know.
I'm good with awarding too, but I think we need to engage legal counsel. Soon, so that they can advise us on what, what steps we need to take. I mean, whether that's going ahead and replacing it, or. I mean, they, you know, just because the legal battle may take a year, doesn't mean that we can't move forward with, with replacing it, so. Anyway.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we have all the stuff that we need to.
Right.
Fight it. So.
Well, we've got two, two roofing companies who said it's, uh.
Been damaged enough.
Yeah, it's been damaged enough. So, I mean, even if we, if we do it, we're, you know, you, you say we had to do it because it wouldn't have made it through. The winter, so.
Well, roofing company's gonna say it needs to be replaced, cause they wanna replace the roof. So, you can argue that side of it. But they're not even saying it's gotta be replaced so that they can pick up the work. It's the fact that we had a roof that had eleven-year warranty left on it, and that's what we should get back whenever they give us the, the repairs.
I agree with you again, Jeff.
But I do appreciate our local roofers, cause they, they called and they talked about it as concerned taxpayers and not just roofers. So, they said that, that's never gonna fly. That's, that's gonna, you're gonna keep having problems, so. So, I'm fine with doing the award today, and we can keep things moving on it as well. Me too.
Okay. I may that we award the health department roof to Missouri Builders and the law enforcement roof to Weathercraft.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. TSI Incorporated Soul Source Advertising Approval.
Okay. This, again, is just approval to put the ad in the paper for Soul Source. It is, if you wanna ask Matt about what this product is, but it's just, just permission to put the Soul Source in the paper.
This is for the port accounts. Port accounts is what we use to do the fit testing for the different masks and systems like that. So, TSI says, and they provided a letter that says that they're, that they do not distribute to anyone to sell in the United States independently of themselves. So, they said someone could buy retail and then try to do it that way, but that would not be approved distribution by them, is what they said, stated. So, that was in writing for them. It's in part of the Soul Source. So, this is just a request to advertise that to verify.
Need approval or signature, or what, Debbie?
Uh, no, just approval in the minutes to say that we can advertise.
I may that we approve the Soul Source for TSI Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of Part-Time Security Guard.
I'm sorry, I have to get Donnie to come over if you don't mind, Judge.
Okay. Well, she does that, then let's go, Public Administrator Appointment. Joe Kuntzstein resigned as of June first, and. So, we have kind of a, an interim, I guess, office manager more than anything.
She's a deputy.
She's a deputy, yeah. So. But, by state statute, the commission will appoint a, an interim public administrator. And Ralph Jobe is. You know, barring something that really would be unusual, will be the, the new public administrator as of January one. So. I've talked to him, Judge Joyce, and they've talked to him, and. As of July one, he would, he would be able to step in as a. Pub, interim public administrator, so. We just need to appoint Ralph Jobe.
So, we have to appoint somebody, what was it, within fourteen days?
Yes.
Okay. So, my only question was, if we appoint him, but he's not available till June, July first. We've done our part. We've appointed him. And in the meantime, until July first, they have somebody where they're.
Yes.
Temporary administrator or interim.
Well, you need someone who can be a guardian ad litem for the boards, and she has that authority. Judge Joyce appointed her that authority.
So, that's covered till July first. We're doing our part. So. I don't have any questions about it. That was the only question I had. I'm fine with it. It only makes sense to go ahead and appoint him if he's willing to take it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I will. I've moved that we appoint Ralph Jobe as interim public administrator as of July first, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we're just waiting on Donnie and Judge Beaton.
So, you'd be ready.
You got anything, Jeff, a little bit?
No, not really.
Really?
No.
I think, I just.
Got all those to initials, so.
Send you guys the timeline on the public director position. I just wanna make sure you're okay with that, and if you want us to get started on that timeline.
On what?
The Director of Public Works.
Yeah, I guess I didn't reply to that.
I think you may have.
Yeah. I know, I saw Chris reply. Said he was fine with the timeline, and I don't remember if I saw something shiny or what.
Well, then I'll be sending you dates. Put this on your calendar.
Okay. I don't like dates. I rather grapes.
I'll work with Larry on where to maybe publish the ad for the paper. Not only the paper, our website, and wherever Larry thinks is the right place to put it.
Otherwise, you serve until replaced. Otherwise, you serve until replaced. Might, might take, might take a while.
I've got it all set up. Everything will fall running.
So, you did have an email about the emergency plan reference guide, and.
Yes.
I know we had another threat the other day, and so, it's kinda checking on that. So, that's still in the works. And then, actually, the new, the new phone system will be better equipped for addressing stuff like that too. So, I talked to Brian about that, and, you know, it's, it's an upgrade we'll have there too, to where we can notify people about what's going on and a little quicker chance to react to stuff like that.
Yeah, you're just gonna have to, through that, not only that, but. Appoint somebody or something to do the notification, you know.
It's gonna have to be more than one person, cause if that person's not here, and different offices need to have a person to kinda check on people. Cause if we get, if you have to leave, you gotta be able to check on people and find out, make sure somebody's not holed up somewhere, so. Larry Bench just volunteered, I think.
No.
I saw him raise his hand, yeah. I agree. I hate.
Yes. On the new phone system, can that, is that got phones on? You know, if there is a call up here at the courthouse that we don't get one out of the public court or the healthcare center?
That's correct.
That's what I, I just don't want my staff to get notified of something that's happening up here that where they panic.
Right.
Okay.
Well, since he volunteered to take that over.
No.
You will make sure it doesn't happen.
No.
Out there. He raised his hand.
I was being courteous to try and get.
I'll tell you.
I, yeah, I, I, all in favor of?
Now, John's tried to recruit me before, no.
Does the Ray Alert system we did with the city give us the ability to create new employees?
Yes.
So, you could send that as a text notification or an email notification?
You could, but it would come down to the same thing, is you'd have to have someone that does it.
Yes, and I do too, but then that, what, I mean, you get an email. Who's looking at your email every five minutes?
Right. I just figured if you could do text or phone through the Ray Alert, it would be in, I mean, a period of.
Well, I don't have any luck with that too. I think every level that we can have is something to look at, so. Let me just throw that into the mix. I mean, it's just another tool we got.
While Donnie's here, I'll just ask him, is Jess?
Okay.
Hethcock.
Oh, Hethcock, yeah.
Yes, he's been working on it, yes. But he had some, he had an operation, and he's been down for a little bit. Cause we're kinda like the walking wounded between him, Richard, and everybody else. Richard's operation went well. He should be home to see, but he'll be out while wanted. What I'm here for is, this morning, I asked about the COVID-19 money. Since we opened back up, we were closed for, what, about eight weeks? We were closed about eight or nine weeks, and we kept our part-time guy off payroll during that period of time. There's no sense in using him. So, we had a little extra money built up, so we had him work all last weekend and this week, since we opened back up. What we have him doing is taking nothing but temperatures, and we're only allowing people in the courthouse that have business there, that's on the docket. And I would like to know if we can put him on full-time for the rest of the year, till January, for the, just to run the testing for the, check everybody's temperature coming in and stuff, and if we be taking out the COVID-19 money. I have, what would it cost to keep him on for the rest of the year part-time? Probably all we're gonna have him do, his whole ARs here.
So, to keep the courthouse functioning and keeping everything going, you're gonna have to have somebody doing that. And you're already a couple of people short. Unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to do what we gotta do with that stuff.
I think it's more of a heads up that.
You're gonna do.
We're having to do this, and, and I'm sure we're one of the thirty-seven thousand hands out here that are, that are looking at, you know. We thought, you should know that this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get qualified to get back open to conduct jury trials. And we've got, and, and I think I'll share with Jill, if she. And we've got, and, and I think I'll share with Jill, if she's not seen it, kind of with the latest round, every, every two weeks we get a new round of rules that this is what you're going to have to do and that the two basic premises are that people feel safe coming in the building. Okay, and, and so that they will show up for jury duty and that we'll be able to get some jury trials conducted. I mean, I've got seven murders sitting in jail. That doesn't count assault first, that does not count robbery first. And that does not count the people we have out on bond. And, you know, we're going to have to get to a point, and so that's why, you know, we're going through the extra screening, you know. It's, it's a lot, it is extra effort, but we're trying to make sure that, and based on the national surveys that are out there, the guidance for the National Center of State Courts, the directions we have from the Supreme Court, you know, so the people will show up. Because if they don't show up, I can't have a jury trial. So that's the direction that we've been working in all these things here, and this is really the first week we've been opened up and bringing people in and it's worked reasonably well, but you know, we're, we're limited, we're not, it's no longer a family and friends day. We got through, but for Aaron phone call, I guess, on Tuesday, the, the first part of the law day went really well. But we're, for example, we're doing stuff like the screening, stuff like that. You know, I've got a law day that's got eighty, ninety cases on it, okay? Normally everybody has to show up and we go through them one by one. So what we're doing is going through that docket the day before and figuring out who actually has to be up in front of the judge. And the other seventy people, they have to check in. And once they check in, then we're sending them on with a new court date. If they don't check in, obviously we'll send them on with a new warrant. But um trying to get people back in the habit, because it's been eight weeks since people came to court. But that's requiring, that takes an extra person downstairs. And I think really our purpose today was to let you guys know, this is what we're having to do to keep operating. Just sort of our general policy is no one likes surprises and so you can be thinking about those things as we work towards the fall.
It takes one of us outside, like you said, during the law day, to tell the people, give them a card when the next court date is, to come back in. So one of us is outside the building, biggest part of the day, and the others are at court.
So, and like, it's, everything just takes longer. You know, we're trying not to have people standing around the courthouse and so we're saying your witnesses have to stand downstairs or outside and so you get done with the witness and then you take a break for them to get one witness to get out of the building, another witness to get in the building. We're trying to minimize the traffic in the building so that we can get as much done on Division Four Judge Walker's dockets, because he has the, really the people intensive dockets.
The way I understand this, this is guard security, is basically amending that contract we have with them to include one of their people going full time.
He was already twenty hours a week, we're just adding him another twenty due to temperatures and stuff and all those work.
Donnie, can they bill that separately?
He probably could if we asked him.
Is that going to be enough? And the reason why I ask this, we were in the criminal justice meeting yesterday and right now we're able to help out because my transport's right now, I don't do a lot of transport, but once the court tempo, the hot tempo starts going up, we're not going to be able to utilize those four individuals, because they're going to be taking people to court. So is the, is the one person going to be enough for you?
That's more, maybe, his job is mostly to take the temperatures and check the people coming in. And because usually he was sitting in the hallway and helping find the right courtrooms, he's not doing that now. We got him right coming in the entrance of the building, that's where he takes the temperature and stuff at. But really, I think his whole salary should be taken out of it, because that's all he's going to be doing the whole time he's here.
That's what I'm wondering if you don't have just an extra person period to the end of the year.
I'm going to start with this.
Yeah.
Address that if we need to. I don't like it, but it's, we got to keep operations going on.
Well, it might be, I think the question is probably well taken, is it's how we document it. If we documented, we took an FTE to screen people, you know, health questions, temperature coming to the building, we would save on the half FTE, we were using at the kiosk, but you know, we'll move all that time.
You can't supplant the budget, so if you had that half person in there,
Well, he's not, yeah.
Half person has to stay there, but if you're adding additional, then you can count that, so the documentation of the additional amount needs to be separate.
Does it make a difference, maybe we're reassigning people?
It doesn't really, because their original duty was still security. If you were saying that, hey, I'm going to make them do something outside of their security issue, maybe.
So we also have to talk to them, everybody comes in the courtroom, we have to get their name and their phone numbers, so, so we did come up the bars. We could call these people back. So the marshals are already in there, not only take care of the judge, but also get numbers and try and make sure we keep track of everybody's going in and out of court at what time, so we can minimize the amount of people we have to call in case somebody does come up with it. So talking about billing it separately?
What?
Talking about billing that separately.
Yeah, they can bill it to us separately.
And then it's a great mystery.
Okay.
Such as that part.
Okay.
Or a separate agreement for billing?
You could.
Half on one, half on two.
Well, it's not in hours, it's not a person.
It's a person that's already on their half, now we're going to add another half.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's the hours that we're paying extra for. I mean, they may, that person may not want to go full time and they may pick another person during part-time.
So what we need is like some sort of agreement to, for a half FTE for this specific purpose, okay?
I think just what you have right there, it says how many hours and
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty clear, it was simple and clear, so, yeah, just so we can document it, so.
Okay.
We need him to get a contact with you.
Yep. Everything going okay? This was about our second week that you've been?
We're in the third week.
Third week.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's slow. I mean, I take a case that should take two hours, took four and a half. Because you got to move people, you know, in and out of the building and, and stuff like that, and it's.
Because we really never shut, totally shut down. John always had cases going. Post his was by video, but we still had people coming in, in some cases, so we would stay busy during the whole time that civil was shut down. Because he, it kind of looked like a TV show where all the faces were on the screen at one time, you'd have eight, ten people on screen at one time, so not counting the ones coming in. So it's just, it's just every way of doing things, it just takes much longer to do.
Yeah, I'm tired of Zoom meetings and stuff like that too. I don't need to hear your cat in the background or.
Well, worse than that, the way, the way, way Yaska set it up with is they used the courts, they used like my email address for my account. And then you think about it, like a thirty, which is a light juvenile law day, fifteen people in every case, it's like four hundred and fifty acceptances. So it's just, it just, everything just takes longer. You know, you take the civil law day docket that you'd show up for, you'd do, you'd be done by eleven o'clock. But you start the day before, because you have to issue the invitations, then you have to check through all the cases, then you have to conduct the meetings, and then you have to, you know, do all your paperwork, which you really can't do while you're running the meetings, so it just, it just takes a lot of effort.
I'll have Floyd get ahold of Debbie in a minute.
Yeah.
Cool. All right. What's next?
Close session.
I don't remember what they were all for, to tell you the truth, so who's up for a close session? Highest bidder gets to go first, or guys with guns get to go first.
Who has a short close session?
Sorry, Tom, you should have brought.
Doesn't really matter. I move we go into close session pursuant to section six, ten point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, sub one, security systems, sub nineteen, and existing or proposed security systems, sub nineteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Yep.
I, I don't remember exactly.